Yeah. You're thirty, thirty three years ago. And so, yep, and so, um, she goes with the power. She's like, I'm looking at my favorite actor. It was Tyron.
Um, yeah.
She felt something. And, um, my wife was for.
Just before you move to your.
That's interesting.
He is thirty seven.
I'm sure. No, no, because none of the squad does. The squad is. Because, so, what happens is in the. My. He's always. If you don't like that. And say, down page one hundred bucks to get that name off. Okay. But that's the.
Twenty two.
Is it all? And so, it's like, at the very.
No.
I'm done. Everybody's not hanging. It's good snow, it's not heavy, but, yep. Who is this person? A D, Tyron Power. Do you know who this person is? I know that's. He's, he's. Maybe Smith. And basically.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, okay, got it. Thank you. Now I got it. Okay, I just.
Like to call the meeting order, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Chung?
Here.
Councilmember Power?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Proton Posenkord?
Here.
And Mayor Davies?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
If we could all rise, please. Vote, vote. Vote. Right face. Vote. Present arms. Our invocation tonight will be offered by Pastor Nick Smith from the Christian Life Assembly.
Lord, we thank you so much for this day. Lord, we thank you that we have people in this city who, who represent us, God, and who are, are looking out for us. God, thank you for everybody in this room. God, we thank you that you have given this place to us. God, I pray for a spirit of unity. God, I pray, um, for our state and local elections, and God, I pray for our national election as well. God, I pray that, um, whichever happens, God, Lord, that we would still be the United States of America. God, that we would put aside our differences. Lord, that we would come together, Lord, and do what's best for the people around us. Lord, may we love our neighbors as we love ourselves. God, I pray over tonight. I pray for wisdom. I pray for your guidance. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
If we could all still, uh, standing, please. Uh, Justin, uh, Lieutenant Justin Rupert, uh, and his explorers are gonna take care of the flag salute tonight. Vote.
Of the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vote arms.
Thank you.
Vote. Right face. Vote. Right press. Vote. Uh, please. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Lieutenant.
So, you council mayor, we appreciate the time tonight to, uh, focus on the restart of our explorer program. Um, as many of you know, uh, the city of Tatchby and the Tatchby Police Department had a vibrant, uh, program up until about twenty twenty that was well attended by the, uh, local community. That program kinda went by the wayside through the COVID years. And so, when the, uh, chief arrived here in Tatchby, one of his desires was see, to see that program restarted. So, um, we began working over the last, uh, probably six months or a year or so, uh, to get that program back on its feet. And what you see tonight is the first initial six kids who volunteered to be part of this program. This is an all volunteer, uh, community-based program. And, um, so the kids went through a, a four-week mini-academy where they learned about officer safety, radio codes, um, and anything, uh, involving the police department and the city of Tatchby. Um, I'd like to thank Sergeant Mike Adams and Officer Aguilar, Officer Kaiser, and we had several other officers who volunteered their time throughout the last four weeks of this program to really get it up and running. So, uh, we're looking forward to the future now, uh, this, uh, program continuing to grow and seeing many more kids volunteer their time, uh, here in the community. So, I'd like to ask the chief to come up. He's gonna congratulate these kids as they come across and receive their certificates. And, uh, and then we'll do a few photos and, uh, and appreciate your time. Evelyn Smith.
Did I, did I move too right?
Sidney Rupert.
Three, two, one.
Sidney Rupert.
We have to joke Lieutenant Rupert's kid.
Three, two, one.
Ronan Carrington. Miguel Rios Salgado.
Three, two, one.
And Sarah Adams.
Sergeant Adams' daughter, by the way.
Three, two, one.
Oh, you wanna do that? Okay. I'm messing everything up. Real quick, before I announce our employee of the quarter. Um, why this explorer program is, I feel, is so important to the police department is, you know, uh, agencies across the country talk about recruiting issues. Well, one of the best ways to combat recruiting issues is you start recruiting from the ground up. Your youth that live in your community that are committed here, have families here, and have established roots. And so, um, you know, like Lieutenant Rupert said, we've got a lot of commitment from the department. So, I just gave the permission, but they're doing all the work, and I'm really proud that we were able to get six this quickly and up and running. And I think we've got many more to come. Kinda what the catalyst was for me is that when we went to do the scholarship last year through the foundation, we didn't get the response that I think we should. And so, one of the things I did was work with these individuals, outstanding individuals in our department to help bring this program back and get people vibrant about what we're doing here and, and build some roots in, in a future department. So, I think we'll have a lot of success moving forward. So, council, thank you, and city manager for giving me the opportunity to get that done. So, next up, I wanna invite Officer Zach Page, come on up. So, a few months ago, uh, we brought back the employee of the quarter. Tony Benelli was our first. We're a little bit behind with a lot of things we've had going on in the summer and people out on vacations and some cancellations and meetings and different things. So, uh, Zach Page is our employee of the quarter from May to August, uh, twenty twenty-four, and we'll have another one here soon. And, uh, a lot of folks know Zach. He's from Tatchby, born and raised. He's worked for the city for a, a number of years, actually started in public works and came over to the police department. And, and what I wanted to really take the opportunity to recognize Zach, this was selected by supervisors within our department. Um, I just signed the certificate, but ultimately, it's approved by them because they work with these folks day in and day out. And they felt that Zach, uh, in his short time coming over to the PD is really starting to take a leadership role. He's getting really involved in our traffic enforcement as we look to build upon that and get a traffic enforcement unit up within this next year. And so far, Zach's spearheading that. In addition to that, Zach is also a field training officer, uh, which, you know, a smaller agency like us has turnover, which we've stopped that now, and we're starting to build. And so, this is one of the foundation pieces that we have here, and I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize him and, and thank him for what he's doing and, and, uh, encourage him to continue, and I see a lot of good things from Zach in the future in this department. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mayor.
All right, ready? Three, two, one. Okay, right over here.
Thanks, sir.
Do you wanna get a photo with Paul?
Yes.
Or maybe Zach?
No. Yeah.
Explorers?
You guys wanna come on up?
Come on, get a big photo.
And then, which, do you want?
Yeah.
Mike, Kaiser, Adriana, Justin, can you come on up?
You want, I'm gonna bail. I'm gonna.
Yeah.
They did the work, I'm gonna bail out.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start eyes right here.
Okay, three, two, one.
Okay, here.
Thank you.
Okay, and then for Pat, right here. Good deal, perfect. Thank you. Any, uh, family that would like to put it forward? Any, any family in the audience that'd like to have a photo right now?
I would.
We've got them here. You got it?
Yeah.
Good.
We're good.
Great job.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
I just wanna add my two cents, uh, that are left, I'm sorry, but, uh, I appreciate the officers that are still here, and I appreciate the explorers for their willingness to get involved. I think it's a great program. I wish it was around when I was younger, but, so, we, uh, we need to support these youth in today's problem. So, I always say, young men and women, you know, so, but I just let them know from me that I really do appreciate in the city council, their willingness to serve our communities. Thanks, officers. Consent agenda, all items listed. Thanks. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-contributional by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in a listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Staff recommendations are shown in camps. Does anybody in the audience like to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Council?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Posenkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Audience in oral written communications, uh, do we have any public comments, any emails or letters? Do we have anybody in the, uh, audience that'd like to have a opportunity to speak to the council? Sir, if you'd come to the podium, please?
Sir?
If you'd like to come to the podium? Okay. Could you please state your name and your area of residency, please?
My name is, uh, Greg Alkire. I live in Tehachapi at the end of, uh, Cummings Valley. So, I'm not in the city proper, I don't think, but, uh, wanted to address the council at the encouragement of a very close friend of mine, Jeff Scholstad, said it was important enough to bring it to the city council. If you're not aware, there were two arson events in Tatchby in the last ten days. And if, if I can have a couple minutes, I'd like to walk through the, quickly, the sequence of events and then get into a discussion about where things went wrong, if I can. Uh, on Tuesday, October twenty-second, at eleven, approximately eleven fifteen PM, there was a fire started at our neighbor's property directly next to ours, a sixty-acre empty lot. On Friday, October twenty-sixth, at approximately the same time, at about midnight, uh, I was woken up by my eighteen-year-old daughter screaming through the house that the barn was on fire, which is about a hundred feet behind our home. The screaming wasn't about a fire. The screaming was about the animals inside the barn. It's a sound I will never forget. I raced outside with her as we tried to calm each other down before running towards the thirty feet of flames. And I got her calm enough to where we could walk slowly towards it and, and thank God, the horses were walking towards us about midway. She was able to calm down enough, and then I went into, uh, manager mode where I was guiding her to, with the neighbor that raced over, get the horses across the street to their barn, uh, hurrying my eighty-nine-year-old grandmother, sorry, eighty-nine-year-old mother, out of our home in her pajamas and her socks, across the gravel into my car where I could run her to the front of the property, leave the car running and keep her safe because those flames were huge. There was nothing but brush, trees between the house. And the fire, although, of course, our direct backyard is not like that, the flames certainly could have reached the home. Then I, uh, raced to our community gate to make sure that was open for the fire department because I had already called nine-one-one. It probably took a total of six or seven minutes for me to do all that, to get to that community gate. Amazingly, Tatchby Fire Department was already coming through the gate by the time it got, amazing. Their, their speed at which they got to a very hard-to-reach property with several fire trucks and get that fire under control was unbelievable. I left my eighty-nine-year-old mom in the car for probably forty-five minutes, not realizing how time was passing. Luckily, she's, her memory's slipping these days. I'm not sure it meant that much that she was stuck in the car that long. The subsequent minutes were chaotic, scrambling, trying to help the fire department any way I could, turn the gas off on the propane tank that was fifty feet away from these giant flames that were now climbing up the back hill behind the barn, and thank God, the wind wasn't really blowing, so it wasn't moving towards our house. And there was fifteen or more firemen or fire volunteers on foot, climbing that hill with shovels, getting ahead of it as fast as they could, and more trucks coming in, and just chaos everywhere. The, uh, I don't know if he was a fire captain or a fire chief, but the guy with the special hat, I kept trying to talk to him about, this was her ex-boyfriend. He started this fire. He tried three days ago in the neighboring property. Uh, we know it was him, and what can we do? But I, he was taking care of business, and I kept saying to him, as soon as you're done, as soon as you can, I need to talk to you about this. This is arson. We knew it was arson. The boy had actually called my daughter after the first fire, almost immediately after it started, asked if she was okay, et cetera. So, as the fire department left, uh, my daughter and I were up all night making phone calls, documenting all the details surrounding the event as well as the suspect at the time. I ended up calling Tehacher, Tatchby, uh, Police Department or Stallion, I don't remember which. And my immediate instinct, when things were under control at the home, was to protect my family. This was twice that he was trying to kill us, or whether he was trying to or not. That, that house could have easily cut on fire, the propane tank could have exploded. We're on a giant mountain just below Bear Valley Springs. It could have spread up the mountain very easily had the fire department not been so quick. Or our favorite dog jumping up when he saw the flames, which woke my daughter, which caused her to scream through the house and wake me. Thank God for great dogs. Uh, the local police department informed me that I was not in the city and I needed to call the county. The guy in charge of the fire, uh, scene, uh, told me there was nothing he could do, that he needed to turn it over to the arson division. Uh, he couldn't give me anything more than that, and all I could think about was, when is the next attack coming? As a father, as many of you are, we spend most of our energy and our lives protecting our kids from this kind of thing, or protecting our kids from anything. I failed my daughter in trying to protect her from the terror that she experienced that night. Then, unfortunately, the system failed us because I couldn't speak to somebody that could tell me anything about, where is this boy? Is he, is he being interviewed? Is he being arrested? What's happening? I had nothing, and we were still panicked. We couldn't sleep. We, we didn't know where he was, and we had a barn that was nothing but ash. A barn that a great friend of the family spent four months building for us out of love and some money. Uh, and it was gone. It was disintegrated. Thank God, the animals were safe. The two cats that were locked in the tack room for their safety were also safe. There is no way, eh, at all, that those animals got out on their own. They could not have. We know they didn't have any ash on them. They had no evidence of being in a fire. They were all loose. We didn't find the cats till hours later. But whoever started the fire, and we know who, uh, let the animals out first. The fire department kept asking us to move my daughter's truck that was kind of in the way from getting more trucks in, more fire trucks in. We tried three or four times. The keys were gone. She always keeps them in the center council, console, no offense to council. And had somebody with her that evening when she parked the car that saw her toss them in the center couns, console. Uh, they were gone. They were stolen. We didn't realize till two or three days, days later, somebody had gone through her purse and stolen her driver's license. After making multiple phone calls and not getting anywhere and basically hitting brick walls at every turn, uh, I finally reached Kern Sheriff, finally got somebody live on the phone, and they, when they heard me say that there was two fires, that there was arson, they immediately said, that's not our department. You need to talk to the arson people. And as a father, I, I couldn't believe it, that I couldn't speak to somebody that could help us figure out if we were safe or not. We didn't know. But I understand the division between the departments. I get it. The, I said to the gentleman I was speaking with, what about theft? I thought, if nothing else, the stolen keys. Okay, that's a theft. That's unrelated to the arson or not, it was a theft. He said, oh, yeah, that's, that's a theft. You can fill out a form online, and he gave me the website. I spent about an hour and a half, eh, uh, filling out a form online for Kern County Sheriff about the stolen keys on Saturday at four or five AM. I have not heard back. I don't think any of us want to go through what my family went through last weekend, ever, in our lives. The worst part of it is that we were terrorized by a young man and his friend, it turns out, that was let out on bail sixteen hours after he was arrested. He confessed to the crimes on Saturday at approximately four PM. Went to Lardo, uh, jail that afternoon and was released by ten or eleven AM the next morning on bail. Now, I know there's a lot of complexity to the bail policies in every county. The bail was set at fifty thousand dollars. Maybe that's the standard policy for arson. Arson with malicious intent, maybe should be different. Arson that somebody has confessed to and stated it was about revenge, maybe should be treated differently. Should they be held more than sixteen hours where the family only has to come up with five thousand dollars to get them out? And it is a threat to a community, uh, and certainly my family. I don't understand, I'm still trying to understand how this all could have happened this way. I certainly feel that the city council would wanna be aware of all this. And if there's anything that the city council can do, whether it's working with the county, working with the district attorney's office, working with the Tatchby at large or, or Kern County, uh, politicians to see if there's something more that, that can be done in these situations where it was intentional arson, it was premeditated arson, it was malicious, it was confessed to, and he's out in sixteen hours and, and a threat to our community and our kids. Uh, you know, there's, Megan's Law was one of those new laws that made a hell of a lot of sense to make sure that the local communities were aware when there was a predator nearby. Is, is that the right direction to take? I don't know. I just know that I failed my daughter, the system has failed my daughter. I have spent the last week, I've slept ten hours in eight days because I'm sitting up in my family room looking out the window because my, I gotta make sure my girls are protected. I've had to hire process servers, luckily, we've got an incredible one here in town, uh, to locate him, to serve him the paperwork that we spent hours putting together to get a restraining order against him. That was the only thing I could do to protect my daughter. It doesn't keep him from attacking her, but at least that, he might get in more trouble if he, uh, breaks the restraining order. We ended up finding him in Sunland, uh, just Saturday morning with my help. So, he, he's been served the restraining order. There's a hearing on the eighteenth in, uh, uh, at the Kern County Courthouse, uh, where my daughter's gonna have to show up with witnesses and evidence to try to keep the restraining order going. I don't know what the city council can do, but I certainly felt that you would want to do something more than, that would help the community and for families that have been victimized like this in these situations so that we are not terrorized more than once. I, my daughter and I will never be the same. Uh, and we're at this moment, right now, there are two arsonists walking around Tatchby, as far as I know, that were, one was charged and released the next day, the other was never charged. Um, anyway, I leave it to you to decide what the best pathway is, and I'm happy to answer any questions and provide you with any detail you, you'd be interested in. Does anybody have any question?
Well, Greg, I just wanna thank you for bringing it to our attention, sir, and I'm sorry that your family has gone through this. I'm glad that nobody was hurt. All that stuff can be replaced.
Yeah.
And you're, I'm saying that, but I'm not living it, so I can't be perfectly honest with you, but I'm glad your, your daughters and your animals are safe, and you're safe. And that's what we do as dads, to look after our families, and so, I appreciate what you're going through, and, and I'll turn it over to the city manager, and there's nothing, a whole lot we can do being in the county, but we can share our thoughts with the people that we need to do, and I'll make sure that that gets done.
Okay.
All right.
Anything you can do, I would appreciate. For the next guy, right?
Yes, sir.
At this point, it's not about me and my family, it's about.
Mr. Smith?
Just a comment. You did not fail your daughter.
Just a comment, you did not fail your daughter, right? You did everything any one of us would have tried to do, so you didn't fail. So go out here tonight, knowing you've done everything you can, to see if there's an ounce of something that we can do to help this situation, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, do we have any other public comments?
You know, can I, may I?
Oh, yes, please, Mr. Garrett.
I wanted to reiterate. You did not fail your daughter, I was thinking that the whole time, actually. Not even sure what I want to say. This is so unfortunate, it's not even funny, right? If that's a statement that makes any sense. There, there are political boundaries, which are also unfortunate. Had this happened in the city of Tehachapi, you and your family would have been treated far differently. Glad to hear Kern County Fire Department was first on scene, and they took care of business quickly, I appreciate them a lot. I would say, don't forget to vote tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Uh, Community Engagement Director reports, Mr. Budge?
Start things with Jessica Garner, from my team, will make the first presentation.
Good evening, I'm gonna tell you guys about Tehachapi Hometown Christmas, it's our third annual, uh, Hometown Christmas. It's gonna bring several nonprofits, businesses, and vendors together to kick off the holiday season, it will be on December seventh, between one PM and five PM. Many of these local nonprofits, businesses that are participating will provide free crafts and activities for kids and families to enjoy. We'll also have two entertainment stages this year, um, one stage being in Centennial Plaza, and one stage that will be on Green Street at Tehachapi Boulevard. It'll be providing entertainment, like live music, carolers, an ugly sweater contest, and photos with Santa. And then the Christmas parade will follow shortly after. Oh yeah, do you, you want me to talk about it? All right. So this year, we do have a new parade route for the, um, Christmas parade that the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting.
Yes, um, thank you so much for, uh, hearing us out tonight. I'm delighted to present the Christmas parade, part of that wonderful day on December seventh, just a little over a month away, which is pretty exciting. Last year, more than four thousand residents came out to appreciate this wonderful annual event, and we had a record-breaking fifty floats. And so our wonderful connection and partnership with the city prompted some updates. And so the city has invested heavily in safety and making sure that everyone, um, can come and enjoy this festivity safely. And so through that investment came this parade route change, and so as you can see, there'll be staging, um, all along F Street from Mulberry all the way up to Curry, and then the actual route will continue like it did, but we're gonna turn left on Robinson, left on Tehachapi Boulevard, and then, um, everybody will get to go right by the Tehachapi Train Depot, and then Santa, toward the end, who finishes off the wonderful parade, will be able to, um, do the Christmas tree lighting immediately afterward. So we're very excited, I feel like this, um, partnership is really gonna help keep everybody safe, and also handle that crowd of four thousand plus people and residents. So, um, yeah, we're very excited to be partnering again, and, um, thank you so much for hearing my little presentation, and if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you for consideration.
Does anybody in the public have any comments? Counsel?
What's the difference between the yellow and the blue? I'm sorry, I'm the...
So, yeah, the yellow is a staging area, and, and so we got an extended staging area, and then the blue is the actual parade, so everybody can start setting up to watch it.
I'll just add, the, the change came from a public safety perspective, in talking about, uh, things, uh, past tradition. Traditionally, the parade floats at the end of the Christmas parade, being an evening, dark, the parades would return on E Street, less light, a lot of kids in the back of trailers and pickups, and in talking with Chief Standridge, our Public Works Department, uh, we identified that we could maybe make a change and do something different. So thanks to the leadership at Public Works, uh, we talked with consultants about putting together the safest possible parade route, uh, for the public, and it, this kind of a circular pattern allows for the parade entries, as it, the parade ends basically at the tree, the Christmas tree in front of the depot, very close to the origination point, the, the staging area, so it's a very short return on Tehachapi Boulevard, under controlled circumstances. Uh, we don't want anything to occur, as we saw that happened in the city of Bakersfield last year, that was a, even as much planning as they did, there's still things that occur, so we wanted to make sure we identified any potential hazards and eliminated those things. So, uh, all of our departments at the city got together to make sure that this was something that we felt would be best interest of the public. So, and then we worked with the Chamber of Commerce, because this is their parade, and announced this is our official nighttime route, it's the only nighttime parade that we do. Uh, but because normally these are presented on consent, we wanted to explain them to you, um, so that way, you had any questions regarding the change, we could, uh, answer those, and not just place it on consent, as we do most of our special events. So with the hometown Christmas, the shutdown of Green Street, the tree lighting at the depot, and the parade, do we need to have counsel approve, because normally it would be on consent and approved?
We'll go through our normal approval. You can probably do twelve and thirteen together, since you two...
Yeah, there's no objection with the council, we can do number twelve and thirteen together with one motion, no objection.
So based on that, staff, the chamber, we're here to answer any questions, should you, uh, should you have any?
So when they are completed at the, at the Christmas tree, where are the floats and everything, where, where do they go at that, from that point?
So that's considered the end, right there at the, at the tree, basically in front of Conan's. Then we've got traffic control in place along Tehachapi Boulevard, so there won't be any, there'll be a detour, so any eastbound traffic on Tehachapi Boulevard, uh, will be diverted to Mountain View, and there'll be a detour in place. The crossing of Green Street will also be closed, obviously westbound traffic at Robinson will be closed as well with a detour, uh, for people to, um, to make it around. So that portion of Tehachapi Boulevard should be, uh, controlled, no traffic, but it's technically the parade route ends at the tree lighting, and those parade floats can then continue back to the staging area.
That's what I meant.
Yes.
Where do they go there?
Yeah, so they'll go back to the staging area, uh, I believe, if it's, it's either Miller Poly that they'll be able to return to, uh, yeah, on Polly? Thank you. So they'll be able to return on Polly, so that way they can, the kids can, you know, unload there. Or they can safely unload on Tehachapi Boulevard, along the Conan's area, if they're gonna join their parents as part, you know, to watch the tree lighting.
Okay, great. Any other questions? No, it's looking forward to it, so...
I'll make a motion on items twelve and thirteen.
Hold on a second. Councilmember Trump?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Hogan Court?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you to your group for working on this and being, making it the safest we can have.
It's, it's a part of the leadership team, this is something that we talk about, public safety all the time, everything that we do, we talk about safety, and, uh, so the, the leadership team in place, it was, it came together very easily. So, thank you.
Thank you, Claire, also, for your diligence in this, and Maya, and Jessica, so, thank you, everybody.
Very appreciative of the city and, and how, how much the city has come in and really, really helped make this a very safe and wonderful event.
It's a true collaboration, we, we've met with Claire, also Data Shaw, who is the parade coordinator, and, uh, made sure that they understood what our goal was, and worked with, tried to work to the best that we could within the needs that they have to, to stage the parade safely.
Thank you.
And then, ready for next item?
Uh, yes, item fourteen, Clean California Community Designation Program.
Yes, so this is for your information, uh, Public Works Director Don Marsh came across this, presented it to the executive team, and what we felt, this is a Caltrans program, it's a part of Keep America Beautiful, is the ultimate, uh, program behind this. The state got involved and made this part of their Clean California Initiative, which is, there's been Clean California Grants over the past few years, this is a new initiative that they have announced. So a part of this designation program, there's fifteen points, and I've listed all fifteen, um, in the, the report. We do almost every single one of these, I think there was twelve or thirteen of the fifteen we already do, in working with other community stakeholders, in trying to keep Tehachapi clean on different, uh, events, cleanup events, um, in not only support, but in leading some of these. So as we started to look at the criteria, Don and I felt that we've already, we're doing this, let's go ahead and, and, uh, you know, make the pitch to, to, uh, to be involved, take credit for what we're doing, and then the state is going to provide us with special signage that says, you are now entering a, uh, Clean California City, uh, the off-ramps, so it'd be in one of the first one hundred cities to be involved in the program. And, uh, nice thing is, Clean California, after, uh, Director Marsh brought it to my attention, uh, this, this program actually reached out to us and said, we had been told that you are already doing these things, and we hope that you jump on board and participate. So I said, well, matter of fact, I signed the pledge yesterday and returned it, so you'll see us on that list, and sure enough, we're one of those first one hundred cities to commit to it, continue to do what we do, multiple cleanup events of varying, uh, sizes, uh, that usually kind of kick off around Earth Day, April twenty-second, weather permitting, and continue through till about October. So we work very closely with Love Tehachapi, with Caltrans, with Tehachapi Area Association of Realtors, uh, Starbucks, uh, the list goes on, Salvation Army, there's different groups that want to do cleanup events, and we're in. So, uh, this has been a, kind of a no-brainer from our perspective, but we wanted to advise you that we're gonna be participating in this program, and I think, Don and I also think that this might also offer, open up the opportunity for potential Clean California Grants as well. There's no promise of that, but we think that there's good reason to believe that our participation might open the door for other things. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the public?
What are the two items we're lacking?
Uh, cigarette recycling dispensers, we don't currently have those, uh, but, uh, thanks to Councilmember Power, and, uh, some of the things she's been doing with our, uh, mural projects, uh, she's identified a couple of locations that we could, and, uh, City Manager Dylan has said, let's go ahead and get those recycling receptacle, uh, so we can put those in place, so people won't throw their cigarette butts on the sidewalk, they can actually put them in a collection bin.
All right, I, I just, I was kind of confused when you said that.
And the other being, um, an education program, uh, K through twelve, we don't currently, we go into the schools, the PD goes into the schools and does a lot of reading with the kids, and different things like that, individual programs, but as far as doing a recycling program, we haven't done on the city, WM does some things, we'll probably work closely with WM to work on some of their educational messaging, so we can close the gap and be fifteen for fifteen.
Okay, super, thank you. Development Service Director reports?
Jay?
Evening, Mayor and Council? Sorry, let me, all right. Okay, so the item I have for you tonight is an agreement with Need and Hunt Consultants to update the Tehachapi Municipal Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, or AOUCP, you'll hear me use that acronym, um, repeatedly, so, uh, that's our airport compatibility plan. Uh, for your sake and the audience as well, in case you don't know what the AOUCP is, is airports, um, planes fly in and out, right? And, and that can be unsafe, depending upon what is located on either end of the runway. And so safety, so what we locate adjacent to the airport is something we ought to think about. Um, that's the principle behind the AOUCP, it's a plan that looks at, um, overlaying safety zones that are created by Caltrans Aeronautics, specific to our airport and our runway alignment, and then overlaying those safety zones on the land adjacent to the airport, and then, uh, putting into place some restrictions on the developments of those properties, so that we have appropriate uses adjacent to the airport. So compati-, that's why the term is compatibility plan, it's about making sure that whatever is in the land surrounding the airport is compatible with the airport operation, again, safety being the principal purpose of the document. So the city municipal airport, we own Tehachapi Municipal Airport, and our airport, uh, was defined in nineteen ninety-six, along with all the rest of the airports in Kern County, in a Kern County-wide AOUCP. That plan has been updated a few times in minor ways since nineteen ninety-six, but has not seen a major revision since that time. What importantly has happened since that time, though, is, is Caltrans, as I mentioned a second ago, uh, Caltrans Aeronautics Division produces guidelines for how documents like these should be formed, and how you ought to form the safety zones, and how you ought to apply them to the properties around the airport. So Caltrans made a major update, a complete change to those guidelines back in two thousand eleven. And so after that date, there began to be some reason to reevaluate our AOUCP against these guidelines. So Ashley and I, in particular, have spent a lot of time talking about this subject, as we've looked at development proposals on either end of the runway. And a number of years ago, the two of us kind of looked at each other and said, boy, it would really be nice if we figured out a way to update the AOUCP that would make both of our jobs respectively easier, and it would be a lot clearer for property owners around the airport, and for airport operators, to understand this relationship. And so we looked around and sought, um, uh, advice from different consultants about how to do this, and then we asked you all to budget for this endeavor this year, which you approved. So, um, what we're doing tonight is hopefully hiring the, uh, consultant to do the work. So we've been working with Need and Hunt on a number of individual projects recently, looking at this issue of compatibility, and we asked them to kind of give us a, a sense of what a full updated plan would look like, which they provided to us about eighteen months ago, and so, uh, we're ready to go ahead and, and produce this update at this point. So, um, again, we reached out to Need and Hunt, uh, Need and Hunt would coordinate efforts with city staff, county of Kern, Caltrans Aeronautics, and other stakeholders, uh, collecting necessary data to produce the AOUCP. And the AOUCP looks at a number of issues, including noise, overflight, safety, and airspace protection. We budgeted two hundred thousand dollars to execute this work, which is a little below the running average, uh, we've been told by a number of consultants that the typical across the state is upwards around, uh, of about two hundred and fifty thousand, but we were able, uh, to work with Need and Hunt on a budget that we believe between, uh, their work and ours, that, uh, that we can keep within that two hundred thousand dollar budget, their proposal's about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, their proposal is included in the staff report, i- if you had a chance to take a look at it. And so we recommend, um, that you approve the agreement between the city of Tehachapi and Need and Hunt for the twenty twenty-five Tehachapi Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Do we have any questions from the audience? Counsel? Uh, Jay, thank you for this, and to your group, I know it's very important, I think I was talking to Greg the other day, I was coming down Tehachapi Boulevard, I wasn't really paying attention, and there was an airplane right in front of me, scared the heck out of me, it was landing, it just caught me off guard.
Sure, I know, that happened to me today, he overflew me when I was there, and it, yeah, yeah.
So it kind of takes your breath away for just a second, and you know, okay, he's in the right place.
But that illustrates the issue perfectly, what is happening in the land outside of the airport boundaries, but immediately adjacent to the airport, so...
Do I have, uh, do we need to make a motion?
Yes. Yeah, I, uh, I move that we approve the agreement between the city of Tehachapi and Need and Hunt for the twenty twenty-five Tehachapi Airport Land Use Compati- Compatibility Plan.
Hold on a second. Councilmember Trump?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Hogan Court?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you.
Assistant Manager, Assistant City Manager reports, Mr. Corry.
Thank you, Mayor Davies and Council, uh, tonight, I have a request for a letter of support. Many may be aware of the, uh, proposed Hydrostore Willow Rock Energy Storage Center project, this is located, um, in East Kern, near Don Road, between Mojave and Roseman, um, it is, and don't, I can't get into all the actual details, because it's way up here, but, uh, this basically uses advanced compressed air technology... But this basically uses advanced compressed air technology to store excess grid, excess power from the solar, wind turbines, whatever. It's out there in East Kern. It heats it up, stores it underground, and then when it's nighttime and people need power, it will be released back to the grid. It's a very innovative proprietary technology that Hydrostore has. This is a Toronto-based company, and they are building this first-of-its-kind project in East Kern. There is a hearing, it's an informational hearing, at the Roseman Community Services District Meeting this Wednesday with some members of the California Energy Commission regarding their proposal. We've engaged with Hydrostore, really frankly, since the beginning of this project. They have identified Tehachapi as their, essentially their base of operations. They've had their entire team from Toronto in here a couple of times. They've met in downtown, they've stayed in our hotels, and they've basically said, "Hey, when we start building this thing, we expect a lot of folks to stay here." And then ultimately as well, we'll receive economic benefit from the full-time jobs that are created. These are going to be highly skilled, engineered, highly well-paying jobs that when we see those kind of jobs created in East Kern, whether it be in aerospace, you know, mining, renewables, a lot of those folks tend to live here in Tehachapi. So, we certainly expect a lot of impact from this project. There's also the hope that this project as well will lead to additional projects. This is sort of experimental. It's the first-of-its-kind in East Kern, and it's a lot of open desert out in that direction. And from my understanding, dealing with the Hydrostore folks and their consultants, they're very happy about what they found in the ground as far as supporting this type of development. So, this could be the first of many, which will not only help, obviously, economic benefits, job creation, but also we continue to struggle in California with resiliency of our grid. We create plenty of solar energy, but what do we do at night? Battery storage is an issue, and this is one big fancy expensive battery, basically what they're making. So, we really believe this is a project that we support from not only grid resiliency, but also the cutting-edge technology and the long-term economic benefit we'll see here in the City of Tehachapi. So, we have drafted a letter to be presented at this informational hearing coming up on Wednesday at the Roseman Community Services District Building. It kind of recaps a little bit about the technology. And then obviously Tehachapi having a long history in the renewable energy sector, and we would like to get the council's support for this project. Again, this is an informational hearing, but there will be members of the California Energy Commission. So, you can imagine doing a project this magnitude in California is a very, very heavy lift. Very, there's several different commissions and boards that have to be approved before you can get to the county side of permitting and regulation as well. And the California Energy Commission will be a big part of that. So, any support I think we can lend will be beneficial with this project. And so, if you can see the letter is attached. But my recommendation today is to submit the attached letter to the California Energy Commission in support of Hydrostore's Willow Rock Energy Storage Center, and authorize the mayor to sign. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Corey. Do we have any questions from the audience? Council members? Does it work?
Yeah. It's, they have a video that, I mean, basically heats it up, puts it underground, and then sends it back up later when they need. I think they drill about four football fields deep down into, down into the earth to actually create their, you know, complete conveyance.
It's pretty amazing, yeah.
It is, it is very interesting.
Is there anything like this in the world?
There's a few of these around. Now, the technology that Hydrostore uses is a little different. So, they have not been, they did get some grace from the state to not release everything because they said, "Hey, this is proprietary, and we kind of need this to have an advantage in the market." So, we haven't got all of the ins and outs from Hydrostore because they were allowed to withhold some information. But there's a few of these across the world, and there's a few across the country. But this is something that's been talked about for several years. Anticipated construction, maybe 2026. But there's a lot of hoops to jump through still, and this is one of the first steps.
I have a question.
Did they say how many employees they would hire?
It's going to be about 85 full-time once they're building. I mean, construction jobs will be several hundred, around the 400 range. These are very intricate machines, and that's, there's a lot of, obviously, electronics involved. You've got heat pumps and air compressors and different, there's a lot of, there's a big lot of dirt work needed to create the reservoir to hold the water. It's going to help cool this, these compressed air and all that stuff. So, there's about 400 construction and about 85 full-time. And these are, again, pretty highly-paid technical jobs. And then you always think about the job multiplier effects. For 85 of one of those, there's probably going to be four more, something else to support that job sector because it's pretty advanced, you know, in the, in the energy world.
Thank you. Hannah? Sorry, didn't mean to get you off.
I was just curious that although this is not located, won't be located within the city and it's going to be in a county area. Have they addressed any danger in the surrounding areas?
That's all going to be part of the very extensive SECA process when that study comes out. And it'll definitely be addressed in that. So, we don't know enough until the process, until the SECA document starts. But these have been done elsewhere in the country. And so, they will be obviously addressing any issues that may come up. But the good news is, it's kind of out in the middle. If you're familiar with Don Road, there's not much out there. And so, that's why. They were initially looking at a spot off of Willow Springs Road, a little closer to Willow Springs International Raceway. But when they started drilling, they ran into rock, which didn't really jive with this project. So, they had to relocate, and they found a better location where the, you know, the geology's much more, it's much better for a project of this magnitude. Yeah, but all those types of details will be addressed in the SECA process, so.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
So, is the SECA complete?
No. This is just the, they haven't gone down the entire process with this yet. They're going through the first steps. You've got the California Energy Commission. They also have the CPUC. So, they haven't started circulating the SECA document yet for this project because they're not at that level yet.
So, this is a question, not a comment. Why would you want to support something happening 30 miles from here before the SECA is even complete?
I think that one's pretty, we support things that happen 30 miles from here on a regular basis. I mean, even today, we're, we approved a donation to Edwards Air Force Base and that sort, and that, for the Flight Test Museum. And we obviously see a huge impact. This is, this is more of a, we support this project in concept until the SECA document comes out. And then obviously, that will be an opportunity to address all these issues. But this is one where I think in concept, based on what we've seen and what this project can do for a very, a grid that needs some support, I think definitely in concept, without the SECA document coming out, it's safe to support something like this.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
Motion on staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember John?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Poggin Cord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
City Manager reports. Mr. Garrett.
Thank you. I wanted to address the gentleman again. You're a victim twice. You're a victim of the fire fires. And you're a victim of, appears to me, what we struggle with at the City of Tehachapi with nearly every day, and that is the state of California's policies, procedures, and laws. And what I meant by vote tomorrow is, we need to vote accordingly so that our state leadership will hear us and start to work on our behalf. Because loosening laws and letting people out of prison, amongst a million other things that we deal with, the bureaucratic nonsense in Sacramento, people are fed up, and I'm fed up with fighting them. But we will continue to fight.
Yeah, I was surprised, doing a little bit of research online, that bail is determined and set by the county and/or a county judge. I assumed immediately that this was a Sacramento bail issue. But at least from the little research I did.
Well, without getting into too many details, obviously. But the county is an extension of the state government.
You bet.
And they are required to follow state laws also.
I agree. Voting can make a difference. Hoping there's something more that can be done.
Let's hope so. On a more happier note, I suppose, our Finance Department has received once again the GFO, GFOA award for budgeting. So, very proud of that achievement. We continue to budget accordingly and very transparent. And it's reviewed and critiqued by an independent organization, and we have achieved that milestone once again. So, congratulations to Hamed Jones and our entire finance team and the entire City of Tehachapi. I know that we put the entire budget book in your boxes this week. So, very proud of that document, and thank you, Hamed, for your leadership on that. The second thing I wanted to talk about, and Corey mentioned it, different things that we do in and around the City of Tehachapi. We go into things with our eyes wide open, whether it's the city, the county, or this entire region, or the state, quite frankly. We donated $1,000 to the Air Force Association. They are raising funds to move the Air Force Museum from the inside of the gate to the outside of the gate at Edwards Air Force Base. 9/11 changed the rules of engagement. They've got quite engagement for viewership or attending, going to, to enjoy the museum. They've got quite the collection of Air Force aircraft over the years. Edwards has been, you know, a leader, world leader in testing. And so, we thought it was the least that we could do. I know that Mayor Davies and Joan Poggin Cord, among others, attended a tour of Edwards a couple of weeks ago. And very impressive what they do, obviously. We all know that. But it's important that we continue to support our military. The next thing is, being a military, today we obviously had our mural dedication. I'll leave that to you. But we have a Veterans Parade on Monday, Veterans Day. The parade starts at 10:00, goes along F Street. They are staging on green. And then at 11:00, 11:00 a.m. at Central Park, there'll be a short ceremony to honor our vets. So, if you can, please join us on Monday. And then coming up here on the 14th of this month, we have our Special Olympics Torch Run. I know Chief last year led that group. It was a great group of individuals. We, out of Centennial Plaza, is that right? Is it again this year, Centennial Plaza? At 11:00 a.m. So, come and support the Special Olympics and Tehachapi Police Department and how the City of Tehachapi supports all of our citizens.
What date was that, Greg?
That's on the 14th of November.
Thank you, sir.
At 11:00 a.m. in the morning, Centennial Plaza. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. We have a Councilmember reports. Jeanette?
Sure. So, today, as Greg mentioned, we had the unveiling of a mural done by Mark Pistana, who is just, just an amazing bachelor of knowledge. He's one of those individuals who is retired Colonel from the Air Force. He was a pilot, he was an engineer, and he is a fantastic artist and just a great man. He's lived here for 26 years, I believe, raised his children here, and has been an active volunteer in our community. But today, he, we unveiled his mural called, um, Defined for Freedom. Thank you. I couldn't read my handwriting. Defensive Freedom. He recently just named that, so we're getting used to that. It was a nice turnout. Thank you to the City of Tehachapi, and thank you, Public Works, for making that very safe. That double barrier was absolutely needed. At first, it might have been, it seemed a little big, but it was absolutely, absolutely needed and a good standard for the future. And then just for the rest of the murals, all of the murals will be cleaned, repaired, and restored with the exception of two by the end of this month. Actually, 10 days. People, the new one will be, the repairs start tomorrow.
Thank you. I wanted to just tell you, I appreciate everything you're doing for the city.
Thank you.
It's amazing to go there and see the history and right there, to see some of these people and these murals that I know personally, after being here for 45 years, it's just awesome what you're doing with your group. I want to just applaud you for that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mr. Smith?
I don't think we've had a meeting since we, a group of us went on the tour, correct? It's the first one since. Yes. So, several of city folks, myself, Jay, Key, Maya. Were there some others from the city?
Jessica.
Jessica, you got to go?
Dawn.
And Dawn. On the, the.
Corey and Greg. You're interviewing.
This is the, the.
Been a lot of men.
Yeah. California Transportation Commission. Bakersfield was the host city, I think on the 16th and 17th of October. And a good way to get their interest piqued to come to our city or to the city down there was to offer a scheduled trip on the BNSF, their business train, pulled by some really cool painted locomotives and an antique railcar setup. And we were able to get on in Bakersfield and traverse all the way up the line through the loop and stop in Tehachapi, wait a little bit, and go back down. And the point of the trip is to point out transportation needs that we, they are responsible for the money spent on all of our highways and some of the, and some of the, any things like freight movement. So, we were there to discuss with commissioners face-to-face that are typically in Sacramento. They meet, I'm not sure how often they meet. Is it quarterly?
Every two months.
Every two months? But there's a lot of money at stake when, when they have their meetings, billions and billions of dollars. So, we were able to meet with them and point out our desires and needs. A meeting a few months back, we were able to convince them to fund truck climbing lanes, middle section, and then the rehabilitation of 58 between here and Kellyani to 257 million dollars, the truck climbing lanes with a portion of that. And to remind them of that there's two other segments on Highway 58 for, for that need addressed. I was on the Kern Council of Democrats, and 20 years ago, it was pointed out by Caltrans the need for the truck climbing lanes. And finally, 20-some years later, we got the first, the middle segment of three funded. But this, this particular trip was to be able to meet them one-on-one and just go over our local needs. And then the second day, I was, I was thrilled to be on, was it the second day or the first? In one of the two days, I was invited to be on a helicopter tour with some of the commissioners. And we had three helicopters fly out of Meadows Field area. Got the, right on the brand-new sheriff's helicopter, very nice, had headphones. And we were able to speak with them one-on-one. We flew out over, for example, the Wonderful Company, which is a conglomerate where all the distribution centers located to the west of Bakersfield. So, they could get literally an aerial view of what's happening on the ground in that area. All this distribution, the freight movements, and the, you know, you have Amazon, we flew over that. You know, you've got Target, and, you know, we flew down to the Great, base of the Grapevine where you've got IKEA and a number of other distribution centers. And we flew up the backside beyond Stine Springs and came out to the east of Tehachapi and came down to our area, and then flew down back to Bakersfield. And to point out, and we could, you could see Highway 58 right in, this is where all this freight movement has to go. And there's new distribution centers that are going to go in that need to come up through Arben, and they come out at 223, and they add it, they flow into, to the Highway 58. So, we were able to demonstrate, you know, visually and personally the need for their support on any kind of transportation infrastructure monies that they have, you know, that they have to, we compete with everybody in the state. So, you're, you're competing with El Segundo, Los Angeles, the Bay Area, all of those folks with millions of people, with millions of needs, millions of dollars. But look, freight moves from California east right through 58. So, and so, so I think we had a very productive visit with them over a two-day period. And we look forward to having more conversations with them. Jay, do you know if the, there was a couple of local funds that we were hoping to get? Do you know if they funded those?
Yeah. Each of the items before the CTC for Kern County were approved at that meeting. Not necessarily out of our expectation, but it was an important opportunity to talk about this, this group might be, about the continuing efforts to complete the interchange between the 58 and 99 in Bakersfield.
Correct.
Some of those motions are still missing. And so, that is the current focus of the call right now is to, is to find the remaining funds for, for that full interchange. So, that benefits us up here as we go that way.
Absolutely. As you recall, the, the West Side Freeway was completed, but there, not all the on and off. ramps were there, so there was two more movements, as they call them, to be funded. The seventh, I think, was already funded, and we're looking for the eighth, and they, they were able to get that. And did some local money, additional money for this, Caltrans, did they get that?
For, for the... Oh, yes. Yes, the additional money to finish the design on the truck. They added ten million to the truck climbing lane.
For the truck climbing, yes. Okay, there was more money needed for design.
Correct.
On segment two, correct?
That's right.
All right. So that was also funded. So very productive and happy to report all that stuff.
Thank you, sir. Hannah Graham, sorry, Hannah?
I just thank you for all your work on that film. I know when I come up from Bakersfield and there's a small accident or something, the backup on the traffic flowing east from Bakersfield with the trucks is amazingly beyond what I ever dreamed, you know, with the backup, it's terrible. So I'm just looking forward to our passing lane, except for the fact that when they start it, I don't know how they're going to maneuver everything. It bothers me to no end, but thank you for all your work on that. I know it's been a lot, long process, and I noticed there's lots of work on curbs and gutters in, in town and road improvements, and it's very well, it's very much appreciated. And on the Pistano mural, my favorite plane was on there from Edwards, and it's quite, it's a beautiful piece of work on this electrical cabinet, you know, and it, you need to stop and see it. It's really great. Thank you.
I personally like to thank my fellow council members for all the work that they do for the city. When you said in this position, you get to see everything that everybody does, and there's a lot of, lot of due diligence, a lot of hard work, our city staff, our city manager, assistant city manager, and all the work that they do on our behalf as me as a, a member of this community, it really just gives me a warm heart to be part of this association. Today at the unveiling of the mural, Mark, the artist, and my father were talking, and they, they found out they both were in Okinawa at the same time, and they both went to Edwards at the same time, a long time ago. So a small world out when it comes to that, and these two guys got to meet and got to talk today, and they're service to our, our country. I want to appreciate everybody coming tonight. Just one other thing I want to say, just make sure you get out there and make your voice heard tomorrow. It's very important that we do that. My father told me something when I was younger, that if you don't vote, you can't gripe. So I gripe, okay, because I vote. Thank you, everybody. We'll adjourn to closed session, and if we have anything to report, we'll come back to report after. Thank you, everybody.